...officer who will present a budget workshop.
Madam President, we're from the South Lawn. Try again.
I don't know if the mic is on.
It's good. It's very loud. Okay. Try that again. All right. We're here again for budget workshop number two. The agenda is pretty light since there's not been a whole lot of movement in the legislation. So the only difference is we passed the bill on together. Today is the last day for House to leave to report House bill or House floor resolutions. And later this week will be the last day for the House to go out, House bill or House floor resolutions, where most bills are actually not on May 16. And you'll see the remaining timeline inside of the I, which is June 2nd, and then the other half until June 22nd. So the most notable bill is House Bill 2, which we talked about last month. There's no change in this slide other than there's question marks after every one of these comments because he just doesn't know what they're going to do. So it's a basic on the vote increase. But we have extra funding for special aid. We don't know, we follow the legislation and apparently nobody does. What we did add in this budget workshop is House Bill 2. If that move forward as is, it would be a little bit of adjustment similar to House Bill 4 in 2017, where part of the increase in revenue would need to be for teacher pay raises. And you'll see that 40% of that increase for the teacher pay raises. And then it would be a differential or a separation at year five and 10 to meet the intent in the law. And there's a standard Bill 26 that is somewhat similar, where it does kind of separate out pay raises at various experience levels. But there is a difference between the Senate and the House about teacher pay raises. And the Senate wants to increase the teacher incentive amount if I'm being only forward. We're watching all of those votes closely. And this is what I would call like a whole straight. You look from the left to the right to see how the bills are moving or if they're actually moving or not. And you'll see that Senate Bill 2, the most recent update is it shows that with Senate bill number 29, that bill was actually somewhat developed on May 3rd. And then Senate Bill 4 was set for very much May 5th. And that move forward as well. So the difference with Senate Bill 4 is the House, is the home senate extension increase. And if that actually moves forward, that would go to the general election of the member who go to the public safety offices. Not a whole lot of movement as you see on the other bills. We received from Harris County Republicans that certain high estimate values, which are about in line with what we buy and work currently at, a very minimal increase, which I would overall say is pretty flat to melt. So we did update the budget with that information on this slide. And we are including on the budget, just for illustrative purposes, a 2% pay raise. We're not making any recommendations at this time. We're just going to continue to watch the state, what legislation does, see if there's any requirements in the state. And you'll see with an illustration of the 2% pay raise, it would be a budget that's at 12.7 million. And the next step is on June 3rd, the TRS board will have a board meeting to determine TRS proactive pay rates. And then any compensation plan in the next board meeting. And then continuing to update in June and August with the expected budget adoption in August and actually adoption in October. And any new questions at this time? That's all I have. I wish I had more information to tell you and some really great views of what this state is doing for us, but I don't have that message today. Any new questions?
Thank you, Mr. Poppy. There be no further, no other business before the board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:05 PM.
adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. I will entertain motions on the items discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I know as far as the move we approved, the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the list of chapter twenty-one, list one, probationary and term contract recommendations beginning in 2025 to 2026? And authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources Services to notify the related employees of the contract recommendations?
I, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the list of chapter twenty-one, list one, probationary and term contract recommendations as presented.
Hi, Jose Jimenez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the list of chapter twenty-one, list two, term contract recommendations beginning in 2025 to 26? And authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services to notify the related employees to notify the related employees of the contract recommendations?
I, Amanda Arabia, move we approve the list of chapter twenty-one, list two, term contract recommendations as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Arabia and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? All opposed? All abstentions? The motion carried four to zero with three abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the list of non-chapter twenty-one, list one, probationary and term contract recommendations beginning in 2025 to 26 and authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services to notify the related employees of the contract recommendations?
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve the list of non-chapter twenty-one, list one, probationary and term contract recommendations as presented.
I, Amanda Arabia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the list of non-chapter twenty-one, list two, term contract recommendations beginning in 2025 to 26 and authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services to notify the related employees of the contract recommendations?
I, Amanda Arabia, move we approve the list of non-chapter twenty-one, list two, term contract recommendations as presented.
I, Noe Asparza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Arabia and seconded by Noe Asparza. All in favor? All opposed? All abstentions? The motion carried six to zero with one abstention. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, May the twelfth, 2025 in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is 14705 Woodforce Boulevard, Houston, Texas, 77015. The time is now 6:05 PM. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the Superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We have no public comments for non-agenda posted items. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Linda Sherard and the pledges to the American and Texas flags will be led by the North Shore Middle School Army, LOTC. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags.
Good evening. Bow with me if you please or your custom. Most gracious Father, we come tonight as humbly as we know how. We come, Father, with Thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you, Lord, for this day, a day we've never seen before. Lord, as we come to the close of another school year, we thank you. We stop tonight and pause and think of those that were part of Galena Park ISD, the families that might have lost a student, a parent, a family member, and we ask, Father, that you just be a shield of protection around them. We thank you, Lord, for this team of eight. We thank you for the guidance, the direction, and the respect that we each have received one for another. Now we ask, Father, that this night, tonight's meeting, be a meeting that's decent and in honor, and you will receive the glory. We not in this prayer, Father, without asking you to be a fist of protection around the leader that you have placed here in Galena Park ISD, continue to crown his head with wisdom and knowledge as he lead this district. And, Father, we thank you for the homes that are represented. We thank you for our students and we thank you for our community. And we ask, Father, that as we leave this place and we get in man-made vehicles that are subject to tear down us, that you allow us all arriving mercies to our destination. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Order, go! Outward, face! Forward, march! Colors, hold! Hold, colors! Present, arms! Order, arms! Forward, march!
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
All right, we've got a full house. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Raise your hand if you're ready for school to be out. All the teachers all put their hands up. Just joking. Hope, I hope everybody's having a great day. Just word of the warning, warning. I hear it's gonna get really hot at the end of the week, so I think you should enjoy this last nice cool evening, and thanks for spending some time with us.
Good evening. Trustee Noe Asparza will assist with tonight's recognitions. Galena Park ISD would like to begin this evening's recognitions by recognizing North Shore Senior High School seniors, James Tamesz and Jacob Tiarina for successfully advancing to and competing in the 2025 Texas Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. The Texas Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference serves as the state competition for future business leaders of America and provides a platform for students to showcase their skills and knowledge in various business-related disciplines. James Tamesz excelled in personal finance objective test, achieving first place, and Jacob Tiarina showcased his abilities in the client service role-play event, earning fourth place. Would their sponsor and principals, the Director of CTE and the Senior Director for Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, please join them on stage for a photo? Y'all going too fast. Would their principals? Principal, he's there. All right, let's give them a round of applause. Next, Galena Park ISD would like to recognize Galena Park High School Junior Future Farmers of America student, Yuvia Herrera. Yuvia advanced to sell at the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Market steer show. The Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo is the largest in the United States with only 26% of all entries advancing to sale or auction. Yuvia has a great deal of support. Will her teacher, Koi Kern, Principal Juan Ramirez, Director for CTE, Toby Castro, and Senior Director for Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, please also join Yuvia on stage? This year, after placing at the top of her class, Yuvia successfully sold her steer and received a financial reward of $8,500 and the experience of a lifetime. Way to go, Yuvia! Galena Park ISD would like to recognize Alma Viejas. Alma, please join us on stage. Alma is a Galena Park High School junior, and she successfully earned a national gold medal in the 2024-2025 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. More than 110,000 teens across the United States and Canada entered more than 340,000 original works in 28 different categories of art and writing. Alma's artwork entitled "Saddle Up", earned a gold key at the regional level and the gold medal at the national level. Will her teacher, Wesley Frye, Principal Juan Ramirez, Director for Fine Arts and Academic Enrichment, Sam Harris, and the Executive Director for Accountability and Academic Support, Dr. Kim Martin, please join her on stage for a photo? Congratulations, Alma. We are all very proud of you. Galena Park ISD would like to recognize Pyburn Elementary School 4th grader, Gia Tamesz, Woodland Acres Elementary School Kindergartner, Luke Membrano Valdez, and Woodland Acres Elementary School 5th grader, Sophia Lloyd. Would their teachers and principals please join them on stage? These students were selected by the Texas Art Educators Association, Texas Elementary Art Meet as the top of team. They are in the top 10% of the state winners for this year's Elementary Art Meet. Their artwork will be displayed on the Texas Art Education Association's website, and they will receive a certificate and medal from TAEA. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. Next, Galena Park ISD would like to recognize five students who were selected to participate as members of the 2025 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Music Performing Groups. Students, please join us on stage as your name is called. From Galena Park High School, Daniel Almazan Torres, Almanza Torres. From North Shore Senior High School, Gabriel Marquez, Diego Palacios, James Santos. Would the educators who have cheered these students on, please join them on stage? That includes their musical directors, Director of Fine Arts and Academic Enrichment, Sam Harris, and Executive Director for Accountability and Academic Support, Dr. Kimberly Martin. And if their principals are here, please join them on stage as well. Congratulations, students. We are incredibly proud of you. Finally, Galena Park ISD will now recognize 24 2nd graders from across the district who scored in the 98th percentile or higher on the quantitative section of the cognitive abilities test, placing them in the top 2% nationwide. The following young scholars were recognized, were recognized by National Math Stars. Students, please come forward when your name is called. From Simiron Elementary, Mario Mercia. From Cloverleaf Elementary, Liam Alfaro Guzman. Alejandro Rivera Gonzalez. From Galena Park Elementary School, Luis Bedillo. Jacob Bindorf. Michaela Trevino. From Harvard Elementary School, Joilen Falero. Christian Olivares. Diego Ramirez, Ramos, excuse me, Diego Ramos. Robert Rodriguez. Wait, 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 Alejandro? From MacArthur Elementary School, Alejandro Aguilar. Jonathan De La Santos. From Normandy Crossing Elementary School, Derrickson Corona Noi. From North Shore Elementary School, Jacob Duran. From Purple Sage Elementary School, Alan Lizalde. From Pyburn Elementary School, Anaya Romero. From Sam Houston Elementary, Ezekiel Rangel. Jose Saavedra Castro. And Elena Vega. From Williamson Elementary School, Luca Robles Pina. And from Woodland Acres Elementary School, Joel Zermino. Would their principals, teachers, support team, Dr. Brown, please join them on stage? Mr. Seabird, everybody, come on up. Students and parents, we are incredibly proud of these students, and we are looking forward to more math and recognizing them again in the future. These have been your recognitions for this evening. Thank you. These have been your recognitions for this evening, thank you. And from Tyce Elementary School, Ian Aragá. Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member, and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment? Yes, ma'am?
Madam President, Dr. Moore, Cabinet, and all assembled, good evening again. Tonight I stand, and I'm going to ask the team, my team of eight, to stand with me. We, tonight we'd like to make a special presentation to one among us that makes sure we all walk the straight and narrow, keep us in line, help us not only professionally but personally, know all of our families. My husband thinks she's the only person in the district that loves him. And to let her know how much we appreciate her. Administrative time came and we were running all over the place, but we want you to know that we love you, Elizabeth, and we thank you for everything you do for this group.
And I'd just like to echo Ms. Gerard, even though some of us give her a hard time, she always puts up with us and she keeps us in line, and she makes we, we're here on time. We never, we're never gonna miss a meeting because we get like 20 texts from her, especially if we're not here on time. And I'd just like to say, this year is gone, it looked like we just started school just like last week. So, to all our graduating seniors, congratulations. And the ones coming back, we just wanna say, be safe this summer, have fun, but be safe, 'cause we'll be waiting for you next year, August, and August will be here like the following week, so be safe, have fun, and I guess, you know, read a book. 'Cause I know the English teachers are stressing that, so just have fun, be safe, and we're gonna be here waiting for y'all in August. Have a blessed week.
I wanted to say, I wanted to thank all the principals that were able to make it here today. This entire year has been one of adventures, and you guys kept it together. Thank you for everything you do, day in and out, on your campuses and your leadership. And, parents, thank you for supporting your 2nd graders, this was beautiful. Keep bringing them back, put books in front of them, we wanna see them here again when they graduate and they attend all the other wonderful extracurricular activities that exist here in Galena Park, so congratulations. Felicidades padres por apoyar a sus hijos. Thank you.
We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting, however, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time for you to do so. We appreciate your attendance, please come again.
That was so great, your speech is good.
Mr. Ed Martier, Director for Facility Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 and a 2024 bond program and facilities construction update.
Madam President, we're proceeds of more cabinet meeting. I'm here to provide the report for 2016, 2024 bond. 2016, we're still gonna close out for Galena Park High School, who are probably two months away and will be able to meet the final change of the calendar. Pyburn Elementary will be the same thing. 2024, Cimarron Elementary, we are proceeding with the design development meetings. They actually have an event going on tomorrow, which is the 70th anniversary for that campus, so it should be very fun. And Galena Park High School, Phase 3A, which is gonna be the fieldhouse, we're proceeding on with construction documents about it, it'll be issued out for June, and Phase 3B, which is the main three-story campus, is ongoing, and we're doing design development meetings for that as well, that'll be issued out for bid later on this week. Any questions?
We attended a FFA banquet, and it was amazing to have it there. I think more appropriate would be the FFA building, but having that cafeteria, I think that, that is the place to have it. And I know Mr. Ramirez probably already told you, but there's a light out there, so y'all need to replace that. And that's not coming from my church, that's coming from me.
I would sort of actually agree, been addressed, certainly checks. That's it?
Thank you, Mr. Martier. We now move on to new business. The official canvas reports, including precinct returns, have been presented to the Board of Trustees showing the results for the May 3, 2025, Galena Park ISD trustee election for Position 3 and for Position 4. For Position 3, the total number of votes for Linda Clark Gerard was 502. Ms. Gerard ran unopposed and is declared winner for Position 3. For Position 4, the total number of votes for Wanda Heath Johnson was 300, the total number of votes for Ramon Garza was 548. Mr. Garza received the plurality votes and is declared winner for Position 4. Let the minutes reflect completion of this canvas in an open and timely posted meeting of the Board of Trustees to certify Ms. Linda Clark Gerard as the winner of Position 3 and Mr. Ramon Garza as the winner for Position 4. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of property windstorm terrorism insurance for the period of June 1, 2025 through June the 1, 2026, from a Grif MMA via OMNIA/NCPA contract number 09 through 08, for the premium of $3,434,880?
I, Linda Gerard, move we approve the renewal of property windstorm terrorism insurance as presented.
Aye, Amanda Arabia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Linda Gerard and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? All opposed? All abstentions? The motion carried 6 to 0 with one abstention. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote, or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Asparza, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried 7 to 0 with 0 abstentions. With respect to the Constitution Construction, sorry about that, Construction Consent Agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote, or take the agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the Construction Consent Agenda as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carried 7 to 0 with 0 abstentions. With respect to the Financial Consent Agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote, or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Asparza, move we approve the Financial Consent Agenda as presented.
Aye, Amanda Arabia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? The motion carried 7 to 0 with 0 abstentions. The following documents were presented to the Board for information. Dr. Juana Giokona, Chief Administrative Officer, presented. Number 1, Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes of March of 2025. Number 2, Early Head Start 2024 to 2025 Self-Assessment and Action Plan. Number 3, Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary, March of 2025. Mr. Ben Poppy, Chief Financial Officer, presented. Number 1, Tax Collection Report, March of 2025. Number 2, 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of March 31 of 2025. Number 3, 2024 Bond Program Financial Report as of March 31 of 2025. Number 4, Quarterly Investment Report for the period of December 1 of 2024 through February 28 of 2025. There being no other business before the Board at this time, the meeting is adjourned, the time is 6:37 PM.